Calls me to order at 7:02 PM. This is a work session of the governing body of Borough of Bloomingdale. At this time, I ask everyone to please rise and salute our nation's flag. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To divide, and to rest in peace. To do not allow the people to stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mayor Dunleavy.
Here.
Councilmember Schiffman.
Here.
Conover.
Here.
DeMato.
Here.
Toots.
Here.
Shorten.
Here.
Yaski.
Here. Also with us this evening are Ms. McCourt, Jane McCarthy, Administrator Ted Erber, and Borough Attorney Dean Kobyell. This is an official meeting of the governing body of Borough of Bloomingdale on January 4th, 2012. Public notification of the date, time, place was faxed to all local news media and posted in the Bloomingdale Municipal Building. As per state's fire code, I'm required to acknowledge your two emergency exits in these chambers, the main entrance which you walk through, a secondary exit to my left. If an emergency was to arise, you walk orderly through the exits downstairs and out of the building. Any questions, raise your hand now. On the issue. Is there any motion to remove tonight from the agenda? At this time, early public comment, motion open.
So moved. Second.
All fair.
Aye.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the agenda item? Please come up, say your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, motion closed.
So moved. Second.
All fair.
Aye.
There's no need for early executive. The governing body, anybody have a governing body report?
Ah, yes. I have one thing. On the matters of the pesticide licenses?
Yes.
Okay. I received the letter here from Rutgers Co-op. And what they need to take is the main core section, the 3B section, and the category 13 section. And then they can spray, and they can also fertilize on school fields. And there is, the schedules here, if you want to give them to Jane on when the classes will be, you can make it available anywhere.
Yeah, I believe the core and the B has been taken after test needs to be passed. The 13 is the one I need to take. Good. Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Just a reminder that Saturday is cleanup day at Boog on 10:00 AM. 10:00. Professional reports, Jane, you have any? Jane, you have any?
The only thing is Tuesday, the 15th, is the last day to register your vote for the primary, and our elections will be open until 9:00 AM.
Ted, you have anything this time?
Nothing at this time.
The department reports to review pending business. Status of the webmaster. I know there have been a few proposals received. What I suggest is that the GovOx Committee reviews these proposals and makes some additions to the governing body, preferably for our regular business meeting at the end of the month. Does anyone have a question or comment on that? Mr. Chairman of GovOx, John, so you'll take the lead on that one?
I get the copies of the specs and I'm doing a marking of it.
Okay. Item B, discussion in regards to transparency in governing. Councilwoman Short, I believe that was your request?
Yes. I don't know if everybody got a copy of what is on the web. I know Jane, you put it in my box, so everybody get that copy from the Pompton Lakes website just to me?
I thought it was in the evening.
Okay. Well, I do know that from the article that appeared in the record that they were talking about becoming transparency and comparing what was on the websites of different towns. And they were applauded for what they have on their website in transparency. And I've always felt we should do the same. I don't know how we move forward with this. It was a list of positions, not people's names, positions and the salaries of those positions in the town. And I don't know if we need legal advice on how to move forward on doing that. I don't know if we need a vote to put that on our website. It doesn't seem to be complicated to me to list it. But maybe Jane, this Jane can tell us if we need anything legal to do that.
I'm sorry.
I was just saying.
Right. We have the salary ordinance, which states positions and range. So that can either be, that's not codified though, and then put on the website. So that can either be posted or to the format on the listed, it could be done as well. There's probably information.
Well, I know there's a lot of public information, and I myself have been dealing outside of the council in another capacity. And it is kind of hard to dig for information sometime, even though the public is entitled to information, it's not always easy to get. And frankly, I was very impressed that they did post that. I know as a former public employee, anybody can find out our salaries, my salary, salaries of pensions, anybody who's retired. And I think the record was right on target when they said it should be easy. Oh, no.
Sorry.
And I do, I'm obviously right on track.
Sorry, I started I texted you.
But they're right on track. And I know, I would like personally, I don't know how other council people feel about it. I don't see anything wrong with posting the salaries for the positions we have.
Want to take action on that?
I think I would like to, but I don't know exactly if we need illegal parameters in order to move forward on that. I just remember Fred saying something about it at one point, it was brought up before.
Well, I think Fred spoke to was the ordinance, the fact that we have salary ordinance already in place, which is a range.
Okay. I know this is a work session, it's on the agenda for us to discuss. I don't think it's appropriate to make a motion to do that tonight. I would do that at the next meeting, depending if anybody at this work session has any input on how they feel about it.
Any other comment?
I have a problem with, if we have to follow the ordinance, we should follow the ordinance. If it's written in the way that the ordinance for ranges.
I think this is separate, though. It's a separate issue. It's not. The ordinance can stay as it is. This is a different.
You want to post the salaries, and that's, the ordinance has guidelines for salaries.
Just a, just a range of salary. If the range is $30,000 to $80,000, and it's.
You want to post a specific dollar amount for that position currently being paid.
I'd like to follow, I'd like to follow what Pompton Lakes did, which doesn't seem complicated at all.
Why don't we, why don't we have our attorney look at this ordinance, just to make sure it's. Now, what benefit would that bring?
The benefit is the public can access information anytime they want in an easy manner. They don't have to come up, and they don't have to say, you know, you have Jim Smith doing this, I want to know how much money he makes. People don't really like to do things like that. It's so much easier to have it out there, and it seems to me we're heading toward transparency in government, and this is not a complicated thing to do. Why not do it? Why would you have against?
I'm totally good with transparency. My only fear is, and this is as a result of reading the patch online, when Joe's salary was posted, it was misinterpreted, right? Because you only post the salaries, but you don't say what these people view different than others from other towns. So it can easily be misinterpreted. So that's the only question that I would bring up. So for example, you said that pensions are posted online as well?
Sure.
If somebody goes and looks up your pension and puts it out there that, oh, Shorten has a retired teacher is getting bags, and how is that fair to the rest of the town? It's not a matter of being fair, it's not a matter of commenting on it. So I don't see how it would benefit to make it even easier to obtain that information, right? It's available already, that you can come and owe for it, if they really want to get into it.
What we're trying to do is be more transparent by having it randomly available online.
What I'd really like to see.
Go look Pompton Lakes's and just see, boom. And I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody there, but I don't think it causes them any particular problems.
What I'd really like to see transparency is the budget information, all the details around it, why decisions are being made.
But you got the certain rate.
Right? All the indecisions, why? Those are the types of things that I would love to see transparency on.
But I'm sure if there's a way to post that, we could do that also.
Other than just following suit from another town.
Well, I disagree. Transparency is transparency, and I agree with Linda, it should be out in the public, and everybody has a right to know. That's the way it is. Other towns have been doing it for years, right? Transparency, it's been involved, it's forsytheing, my friend, and they already had it already approved. And we, I thought we already made a motion last year to do transparency, and it's not going on the website, and it should be on the website.
There's an awful lot that we don't have on the website that we really could.
I believe that should be on.
But you need to be able to create that, and you know better than most probably with your technology background, how, you know, we're even working toward our committees and our commissions putting their agendas and their minutes online so that, you know, people can access information easier. And that's, that's all this is. It's just one piece of information.
As I said, I'm totally fine with the concept. I just don't know if today we're ready for that information, and how that information is interpreted, right? What's kind of.
Salary for a job is a salary, how could it be misinterpreted?
Well, I recommend you read the patch and.
No, I'd rather, I'd rather get my information from other sources than.
Would you raise?
Was it an article in the patch or comments?
It was an article that posted every single employee's salaries, and they killed Joe on it, lying.
In the way down?
Yeah, absolutely. The comments are made.
It's what it is.
Because people in general, they're unhappy about the way government is set up, about the way we pay our policemen, our teachers, our administration. They're just unhappy about it, and it just became the space for them to go and complain.
You don't want the public to know?
No, no, I'm not going there. I'm totally good with the concept. My only question is, what, where is the benefit? Right? We spend a lot of time resolving problems that the town has. Is this a problem that we have that we're not posting it? Are we resolving something that's not in place? Is this a benefit to the public?
I figure it should be posted.
It's just a benefit that people have the information without having to come up here and make an open request. It's just informational, I don't think it's controversy at all. It is what it is.
It's transparency, that's part of government.
I don't really disagree with, with the concept of the whole thing. I just could ask a question. You look at Pompton Lakes, the administrator. Most administrators of other towns get part of salaries doing other jobs within their town. So, and the administrator gets X amount of dollars, and then he gets X amount of dollars for being OEM, or he gets X amount of dollars. Do they identify the person doing all them jobs in total salaries? Do you know that?
No.
I don't know.
It's job, it's job description.
Job description.
So you assume by reading it, it's a different individual?
But it's, in most cases, it's not.
Correct. That's the raised point. Again, no one's disputing the importance of transparency. The fact that there's a process in place, and that's called an Oprah, I think you're just duplicating services, okay? But if the council pleads to post them, then you vote next meeting to post them. The issue being raised by Councilman Yaski was how it's misinterpreted to Councilman DeMato's point. You can have Town A's administrator makes, I'm just making these up, 140. And then you go to Town B, a similar sound, a town, and it says 110. And so the average public's going to read that and say, wow, Town A's just overpaying their BA. When, if you really understood it, and you want to be, so therefore not being really transparent, he's only making 110 in Town B, but he's making 10 grand as utility director, 10 grand as OEM, 10 grand as, you know, another entity, he's really making 140 or 130. That happens quite often.
And I think that could be, that should probably be addressed and spelled out, just like you just said it. Should be.
And again, just where do you draw the line of what you're transparent with? Why not? Someone can Oprah our emails, so why not just post all that on the website? To save the person from having to come here and Oprah my email.
No, I think that's extremely.
But I, but where do you draw the line? Why is it specific to payroll?
I think we'll learn with time what, you know, what should be. And I think as time goes on, and we all get better at using the web. I mean, it was only a couple of years ago when I sat here before I was elected, and I got the reaction from the people up here that, oh, nobody goes on the web anyway. And that, I think, has changed monumentally just in a few years. I don't think people realize how many people do go on the web. And I know that we, I was discussing with the webmaster, something on the Facebook, and she said, well, that's got to be on Facebook because we get so many people using it, and I think it's exploding. And I think there's nothing wrong with people knowing the facts of their government, their taxpayers.
Well, you're right. So you're right, it's not really transparent. Jane's mentioned like a union contract. You put a white collar person's salary, that's not a true picture because of the contract charge.
Yeah, Pompton Lakes, correct. It's mostly just management, but you're not the same union contract. That's not.
It was a long list, though.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
It's a couple of pages long.
Again.
Okay, we'll look at it and.
I think we should let our attorney look at the ordinance. I think we're putting a cart before a fourth, as long as.
It's not an ordinance, it's, it's, the question is, you want to post salaries on the website?
But it's in our transparency.
Well, no, no, what I'm suggesting, if you're going to do that, is just post the salary ordinance. Councilwoman Sherman, Sherman's objection to that was she'd rather see the specific amount that person's earning. And I'm like, we already have salary. Anyway, we'll clear it, and then you can put it on the agenda if you choose to take action. Item C, now it is a work session, but we are going to take action on introduction here because we got to get this moving. Last meeting, we did a resolution authorizing going in this direction to amending ordinance, our Rose Fund ordinance to allow funding for blue acres projects, which are flood mitigation, flood buyouts, and flood repairs, utilizing the Rose Fund. This can be done by amending the ordinance. So I need a motion to introduce ordinance number.
Six.
Six, 2012, amending the Rose Fund for blue acres projects.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Wait, can I discuss it? Is this, is this the ordinance that's in our, that's in our book here, 65? Okay. The next page. I just.
Second.
This is what we saw last night. This one. I'm just, this will become part of 65.
It's amending existing Rose Fund ordinance.
Okay. All right, I understand now.
Which we can't, again, you honestly voted on giving last meeting, now we're introducing. So there's a motion to choose my title.
Second and final reading on 22nd.
22nd. It's at 7:00 PM. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmembers Conover.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Toots.
Yes.
Schiffman.
Yes.
Shorten.
Yes.
Yaski. Chapter 65, Borough Open Space Recreation, Upper Lake Protection, Parkland, and Shore Preservation Trust.
Right. That will be it. Okay, thank you. New business. Item A, 13A, authorization for purchase of 2006 Crown Victoria from the Borough of Kineland for our construction office. At cost of $900, and certain occasions, our funds are in your folder.
Yes, the only caveat that I'd like to make, Mayor, is that Kineland will consider this at their Thursday at meeting. So I'd ask the council to approve this in tinge that Kineland passes there. So Kineland passes, we have a mutual deal, I'd like to move forward because we're short two vehicles, and I'd like to get this going, and I would need to stall this more.
Do you know, my, my question on this is, we've had budget meetings, we met with the construction official, I didn't hear in, in that, that a vehicle was needed.
These vehicles ran until they stop work. So at the time that you had those budget meetings, these cars were working. These cars, if you read the memo, are pretty old. We use them to like completely stop working, and the TPW gets the point that says, uncle, we're done, you know, and it just, it's not proven to fix it. So if I can purchase another car for $900, and keep the construction of the property moving, I think it's a fair trade to move both.
What do we know about the car?
Inspector Barmakas, this is.
What are we doing with the Ford Ranger that we replaced with the maintenance man?
It's been used still in the, he could have, he uses it every day. The, these two vehicles that are, I'll then seek permission of the mayor, council, to put them on dump deals, sell them. So, kidding, we may come back with our money, and it'll be a wash. But I'm just trying to keep them moving.
For $100, you can scrap it, and you'll make money.
Well, either way.
I'm going to sell them scrap.
Well, I'll get approval of the council and move forward.
Right. Is there a motion for this?
So moved.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember DeMato.
Yes.
Toots.
I, I, I'm going to say no, because this is just brought up now, and I don't, I just feel right now, I think we should wait.
Dance hard, die. Actually, I think dance hard wasn't even going to reverse for a few weeks either.
The kids were trying to see if they could sort them out.
Again, is it a no vote?
Schiffman.
Yes.
Shorten.
Yes.
Yaski.
Yes.
Conover.
Yes.
I think if we scrap them, we'll come out ahead.
Item B, adoption of block party rules and regulations. And again, I know this is a work session on taking action, although because it's the season, every year we get a few requests for block parties and street closures, and we never had a policy procedure in place. So our attorney drafted, which is in your book, block party rules and regulations, so we're just looking to adopt that as our procedure or policy for the borough, and post it on the website.
How many block parties do we get?
Four, five, but there's no, there's nothing in place.
I don't really object to it, but then again, I want to go back to work session. It's good to put things out there and to discuss them. I understand how why Joanna felt the way she did about a vehicle, that it was not a lot of money, but.
Your choice, again, things come up, and obviously, as you know, your choice, you can make a motion to table and put it on the next agenda. Rules and regulations for block party. Do you have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? John.
This is for new business.
Roll call.
Councilmember Toots. This is supposed to be work session. We should be voting back a work session.
Again, they make a motion to table.
I make a motion to table this.
Second.
There was a motion on the table.
Motion to table takes precedent of the motion on.
Right, no, we have to rescind. So, precedent of the motion, rescind the motion authorized.
Whoever made the motion.
Go on, motion to table.
No, no, they have to rescind the motion in the second.
Attorney saying, we do. So, just saving. Motion to.
I have.
Yes.
Hey, John, you want a motion to withdraw your.
Yes, I mean, the motion.
To withdraw the request to authorize.
So we come back two weeks from now and authorize?
Yes.
Silly, but.
John, you second that?
That's fine.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Councilwoman Toots?
Yes.
You make a motion? To table. Okay. Any further discussion? John?
This is supposed to be work session. We should be voting back a work session.
Again, they make a motion to table.
I make a motion to table this.
Second.
There was a motion on the table.
Motion to table takes precedent of the motion on.
Right, no, we have to rescind. So, precedent of the motion, rescind the motion authorized.
Whoever made the motion.
Go on, motion to table.
No, no, they have to rescind the motion in the second.
Or, attorney saying, we do. So, just saving. Motion to.
I have.
Yes.
Hey, John, you want a motion to withdraw your.
Yes, I mean, the motion.
To withdraw the request to authorize.
So we come back two weeks from now and authorize?
Yes.
Silly, but.
John, you second that?
That's fine.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Councilwoman Toots?
Yes.
You make a motion?
I make a motion to table.
To table.
And I will second.
All right, any further discussion?
I don't, just that I am going to support the motion to table because I really don't see this as an emergency before the next two weeks.
Unless we get a request for a block party before the next week.
Well, then they can come back in two weeks. They're not going to have a block party in two weeks.
It's fine, it's fine. It's silly to put all those. Yeah, please, no. Roll call. All in favor?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Appointment of an alternate to the JIF, Joint Insurance Fund Commissioner. What's the deal here?
In older municipalities, they had a JIF commissioner and an alternate. The alternate JIF commissioner was not a model. I'm the commissioner, so I need a, an alternate, and my recommendation is.
Sure, she's willing to do. So a motion, can we take action on this?
Yes.
By the motion to authorize Sherri Gallagher as our JIF alternate.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion?
But just, I just want to, I'm not that familiar, what would her duties be?
I can't make the duty.
I can't make the duty, she goes and replaces the person of the borough.
Which I think must be a ten. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Toots.
Yes.
Schiffman.
Yes.
I think if we scrap them, we'll come out ahead.
Item D, other action items, only because we're getting things done in the Borough of Bloomingdale, and also because of time sensitive, because the deadline is June 27th for this year's State County Open Space Recreation funding. And I would ask the council to consider reapplying for our restrooms at Walton T. Bergen. And I asked for it this evening, so our year could just rescind pretty much last year's application, so it's not much involved. Do I have a motion to do something?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes. What, do we know the value of the screen?
$100,000.
$10,000?
Is that, you'll keep the same?
Same class year.
Can we do the bathrooms for over $1,000?
That would be our plan.
Then if we can't.
Well, that's the engineer. Which must be ten. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, roll call.
Petush. Yes. Short.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Khamli.
Yes.
Item D, other action items, only because we're getting things done in the borough and living down, and also because of time sensitive, because the deadline is June 27th for this year's state-county open space recreation funding, and I would ask the council to consider reapplying for our restrooms at Walton T. Bergen, and I asked for it this evening, so our year could just rescind pretty much last year's application, so it's not much involved. Do I have a motion to do something?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, what, do we know the value of the screen?
A hundred thousand dollars.
A hundred thousand dollars?
But you'll keep the same.
Same class year.
Can we do the bathrooms for over a thousand dollars?
That would be our plan.
Then if we can't?
Well, that's the engineer.
Till we hold the money over?
What we can manage.
We have to.
If the engineer did break this back last year, I'm sure he's sufficient for a while.
Is this a dollar-for-dollar grant, or is this...
Kind of, go every year or something. All right, any further discussion? Any roll call?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what, what was the answer to the last question?
No, it is not a dollar-for-dollar grant.
It's the county open space.
Councilmember Short.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Khamli.
Yes.
Petush.
Item E, although it says authorization, I promise I will not act, ask for action this evening. It was more informative. I had asked Ted to seek proposals for cleaning up Sloan Park. Obviously, Sloan Park's bigger picture is, he, July, we should be done with our permits and so on and so on, but in the meantime, I have numerous residents approach me about this. It looks terrible. And we do have open grants from state counties on park projects that we're trying to lump into the big picture, actually with our, with our $120 million bond projects. I think we have, between bridge and other money, a substantial amount of money still out there, that the county sent us a letter that we need to spend down. Ted and I attended a meeting last week at the county open space, saying, give us till the end of the year. We have money on the bridge, money on the park, money on Oakwood, and money on Walton T. Bergen, that we need to spend down, otherwise we're losing. So Ted and I tend to represent we'll do that. Here, I'm not asking for authorization tonight, because I will when we get the proposals. I think Ted has one so far, two so far.
One again and one coming.
Okay, we're waiting on one more, to clean the park. Get rid of all the debris, just make it clean, and move the playground from the park, reassemble it at Walton T. Bergen. Okay, so, just giving you information that when, hopefully by the 24th, I'll be asking for action to authorize and approve that work to be done, out of existing grant money we have. In some cases, 2,006. I hear again, item F, because it's a chance of revenue, I know Councilman Yazdi wanted to get this introduced to not lose time, was introduction of an ordinance establishing a new section of our code 404 for soil and mulch permits. As you know, residents are able to get free topsoil and mulch. As a revenue idea, Councilman Yazdi presents the idea of having our TPW deliver it to the home. We would have waivers, contracts, protecting the borough, preventing drop curbs. The attorney has written the ordinance, the law protections in place. There's a $50 fee, and... See, I'm ready, I'll let you speak to it.
Yeah, $50 per delivery, and you can, you can ask the TPW to bring the free mulch or topsoil to your, essentially your doorstep, right, and it's bringing it to your house, rather than you having to go down there and shovel in, you know, whatever you need. And to rent a truck alone, it's gonna cost you more than $50, so this would be good for their, our residents, good for the borough, bringing in some revenue, and just makes that free mulch and topsoil available to you much simpler than it exists today. So it's a win-win for all, and you still have the ability to go down there and get it for free, if you wish to.
All right, so...
Question.
Yes.
Now, $50, what is that $50 giving them? Is it, is it a mason dub, single axle, triaxle? Mason dub?
So if you need two, it's $100.
Okay, now we have a, we have a deal with our REOR that it's $10,000 in free mulch, $10,000 in free topsoil. Is it 20 in each?
Twenty thousand in each, right.
$20,000 in each.
Twenty thousand dollars combined.
Combined, so it's $10,000 each, like you said.
Well, not if you do more topsoil, I mean, it's 20,000 in material.
Okay, so it's $20,000. When we run out of that 20,000, when people start taking it, then what?
It's first come, first served. If you read the ordinance, it says as long as it's available, it's to us and to the residents, first come, first served, you can have it delivered to your doorstep.
Based on how it exists now, residents picking up, we haven't come close to utilizing what's, what our contract tells us to get.
Hasn't been being picked up with a machine either, as you know.
That's why. Oh, of course, that's why, right, but, but that's the most things for our block, and if we, if we run out of product, again... It is, it is just the revenue, more revenue for the borough on the delivery side.
I don't have the ordinance either. It's not my fault. I don't have the block party either.
It was all emails.
Put a new, put a new business, the first item should be certification of funds, that was for the $900 vehicle.
No, I have my first thing on the business is the Phil Donrufowski report on what is better for breathing.
Break one of the block plans.
And that's all I have.
That's the agenda, I have.
Okay, not the agenda, a new business, I have absolutely nothing.
Go one tap back, maybe just a spot.
Okay, I only need more topsoil.
Introduce by title, so...
I make a motion to table.
It's an opportunity for revenue.
To give it an opportunity for all councilpeople to have the chance to read it.
Well, councilman, you can introduce by title, have that opportunity, and if you don't like it, vote no on introduction on the 8/22.
This is just to read by title.
This is to introduce by title. It's the season, it's a chance to make revenue, and our budget needs that resource. So...
And our TPW's gonna do this.
It's a revenue, come up with revenue ideas, I know.
I know, but we...
Haven't heard of others, just a great idea. Try it. Let's try it.
Just short, just so you understand, had a conversation with Al Yaligur, and he said as long as it's not more than four or five per day, which, you know, any resident would have to come and schedule, okay, so they give them a time, they give them a date, and they will be delivered on that day, they can handle that if you don't want us.
We're not dumping on the property, we're dumping curbside.
TPW waiver. So, again, I'm looking for introduction by title, you can do all the homework, and I did bring this, well, this was in everyone's box for more than, more than a week, an email, so there was time for review, but just, just my title, have two weeks to review, and either vote for it on 8/22 or you know. So, whatever motion is used by title. Ordinance, 8/7, 2012, establishing new section 404 for soil, soil and mulch permits, is a motion, Councilman Short, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Second, final.
8/22, second and final half. Again. Uh, roll call.
Councilmember Short.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Khamli.
Yes.
Petush.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item G, discussion regards to allowing private lakes to utilize Morse County Co-op for road paving. As you all know, we are members of Morse County Co-op, which allows the borough to access low pricing for various services. This, this item G is specific to road paving. As you know, we had our engineer... Is that all good? We had our engineer give us indications on Jeffries, what the cost would be for the Co-op, which was $60,000 from end to end, and a few other roads we want to look at this year as well. For the record, Reelin app, the bids were open today, we're paving a Reelin, we have 300,000 DOT money, and I understand the bids came in favorably, to be awarded on the 22nd. My theory here, our private lakes pay for their own road maintenance, and they show it, they're private lakes, they own the roads. But I would like to consider, have the council consider allowing our private lake communities to access the Co-op via the borough. So, in essence, the borough would be the banker, and it would be an assessment project paid back by the associations, including interest, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm confident, again, plus the borough, nothing, it'll be a lot of advantage to, you know, people who are the same tax rate as anybody else in town, and there's a chance that it'll help us with even funding deposit money. I'll give you an example. Right now, if we were to do Jeffries, Raph, Mead, which is all the road, and Knoll's Road, I'm waiting on firm numbers, that'd be approximately $150,000. The borough would be 5% of $7,500 to do that out of our budget, and I believe we have 30,000 in the budget for capital projects, deposit money and capital projects. If we were to offer to an association, and they were to, you know, front-load their end of the piece, if it covered even the borough's adequate expense on the deposit money, and the associations would pay over five years, six years, again, assessment projects, who were water sidewalks, to grow back, versus the lakes that we go to a private contractor and paying four or five times the price. Any comments? I'm not asking for authorization tonight, but what I will on the 22nd, I will come back with firm numbers on the three roads we want to pay the town through the Co-op this year, in the summer, and at that time ask for that, because then we can reach out to the other communities if they have interest.
So the assessment would be paid by the individual community that wouldn't cost the borough taxes to pay or anything?
Correct. It would be paid in their tax bill and assessment project, just like utility or silver project currently is. Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah.
We'll revisit this with firm numbers on the 22nd, and I'll take action. Good, thank you. Item H, discussion regard to ethics ordinance, again, not seeking action tonight, want you to reconsider this. Last year, nobody repealed the borough's ethics ordinance. I had our borough attorney review our repealed ordinance, and he suggested there's actually no issue in putting it back on the books. I believe it was represented last year, that our local ethics ordinance contradicted or, or, we didn't need it because the state has one, and my argument was, yeah, that's true, but ours just gave more teeth, local, had a, had a discipline, had a mechanism in it, had a fine mechanism in it for bad, there's ethics charges in public officials, board members, commissioners, et cetera. So at the 22nd, I am going to ask to reintroduce that ordinance, so you have two weeks to ask the questions of our attorney. I don't understand why it was ever repealed, but I'd like it back on, to, to be on top of what the state does have, because ours was a good ordinance.
Doesn't the state override municipal?
You can establish your own local ethics board by ordinance, or if you don't do that, you completely rely on the state.
Ours was stronger than the state's.
Yeah, but doesn't the state override municipal?
Normally, the more restrictive is permitted. I haven't looked at the statute that establishes that authority in the local ordinance board, but typically, on issues of this nature, a local ordinance can be more restrictive than the state. The state would establish minimal standards.
So if we were to try to introduce something weaker than the state's, then that would prevail, the state would prevail. If we implement something stronger, which we had...
I understand that, okay, we have something stronger, that's understandable, but doesn't the state override municipal ordinances? Say the state has one put into place, okay, and ours is strict, and theirs is lenient, don't they fall towards what the state is, if it reaches up to that level? If it goes to the state courts, doesn't it go under the state ordinance?
If you have a municipal ordinance, and there's a field taken from...
Right, from here, it goes up to the state.
The court would be bound by the terms of the ordinance, if the ordinance were found at us.
State or municipal ordinance.
Municipal, or municipal. Well, my questions would revolve around what would be the membership of the board that decides this. We would, if we adopted a local ethics ordinance, we would create a board of ethics.
No, it's the conception of the court, municipal court, is the non-jury on ethic charges. If someone got an ethics charge against somebody, it would actually go... You can go through the court system, it's fine mechanisms, it references the chapter in our fine ordinance, all fine things down, and it would be handled by the judge, it's not an ethics board. That was all built into the ordinance originally. Again, I just never understood why it was repealed, you know I was against last year, and I'm springing back forward, and I'm taking action tonight, you have time to reread it, you have time to ask frank questions, in two weeks we'll revisit the discussion.
Who hears it at the state level, if you have, if you have no local ordinance?
I have an ethics board as part of it. Local finance board.
Local finance board.
It's not DCA. Yeah, I think it's local finance. There's an ethics board at the state level. Again, ours, I just never understood what it was. So, we'll revisit it, think about, just to tell you it's coming up, it's a work session, this will be coming for action on the 22nd. Okay. Are there any emergency items, I believe there are, to take formal action on? Late public comment, I need a motion to open my so moved comment. Uh, discussion? Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jack Mill, Reba, couple things. Uh, this soil mulch thing, is that only Monday to Fridays? Phone on delivery, is that only Monday to Friday?
It hasn't been established yet, but I would think so, because of the number of employees that are available, Monday through Friday.
That's, that's, that's very...
Only makes sense.
Okay, Monday to Friday, okay. Not a big deal, okay. The deep trust.
I'm good. $50, we'll cover that anyway. Um, second thing, I have a flood meeting next Tuesday, 15th, all right? Question is, in March, we awarded the bid, all right?
Be snagged and be settled.
Correct. Um, my understanding, we're ready to go, but we're waiting on some contract issues.
Contract issues, legal paperwork.
What's up with that?
The engineer, I believe, has forwarded that to our attorney, there's just a few things that they have to be shorted out, and I want to take words from James about it.
There was an issue with the ordinance and payment forms that was submitted, so they're having to read them and send back. And I just hope that long...
All right, so I can bring this back to our people, we're moving forward, just, just wait for some wording, we'll get straight down.
That's resolved, we've been told. Okay. Let's look to, um, call about it today.
Okay.
Everybody looks, we get approval from the...
Okay.
Sure, what time is it?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven o'clock, all right? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? See, no one, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before we go to executive sessions, we have six matters of negotiation, one matter of litigation. Uh, before we do that, I know this is not a regular meeting, but there's an action we need to do, because the planning board meets on March 24th.
What?
No, they don't meet this time, they're not canceled.
Who canceled?
I, that's a matter. Meeting's canceled this week, it's 24th, they're 24th. What I'd like to do is bring up the subject, open the public comment, so they can comment on it, and then take action. I need to get a resolution, we already passed a resolution, asking the planning board to research Union Ave as a redevelopment zone. Now we need to authorize the resolution, asking to hire the planner to perform that, and it costs $3,600, which is phase one, and not exceed $10,000, which becomes a conclusion. It is in the current introduced budget, and this is again, for the redevelopment zone on Union Ave.
Zone or zones?
Zone.
Which zone?
We already voted to have them do this, to, to declare Union Ave a redevelopment zone, from the first property after the chiropractor to the town boundary.
There's also on Main Street, there's also...
No, no, yes, we're just, specifically just talking about Union Ave. Main Street, yes, that too, that would be as a budget item, this year or next year. This one ties in with the tax advantages without a little pay, so we want to try to see if it can be done. So, that's the issue. Also authorize the planning board to hire a planner, which they saw bids for, and the cost is 3,600, phase one, max $10,000, to bring this to conclusion. After phase one, we might find out, it's, it can't be done. $10,000 is in the introduced budget. And this is based on what, part of what Dieter Lurch presented to the governing body at a previous meeting. So based on that, I have a motion open to public if anyone wishes to speak, because it was not an agenda item. I need action, because I want to give the planning board more time than two days for my next meeting.
So moved.
For the public, is this all in favor? Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please come up, and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Bob Philgraff, Aitland and Lane, I am also a member of the planning, mayor, for the three members of the planning board that are here this evening, we would just like to make it known that we appreciate what you're trying to get accomplished, and we appreciate where you're going with this, and the timeliness of it, but we at the planning board have not received the resolution at this point in time.
The initial resolution left off, right?
We have not formally received it, it has not been given to us, it has not been discussed at a, at a planning board meeting at this juncture in time.
Okay.
So we hear you, and, and frankly, we're somewhat embarrassed that we can't respond in a more positive way at this point in time, so just making you aware of that, and in fact, as, as my understanding, our, our work session this Thursday has been, has been canceled, and our next regular meeting is the following Thursday, so that's just about where we are at this point in time, and just wanted to make you aware of that.
What do you think, yes? Well, no, the resolution we did, when we acknowledged Bruce Cockburn, the night we acknowledged Bruce Cockburn.
Jane, I, I understand that, I understand what you're saying, I, I'm just saying that we at the planning board have not, have not received, at least the members have not received the...
Have you had a meeting since that resolution was adopted?
Uh, let, let me see, we had our regular meeting in, in, in April, the, the third, third, the third Thursday, our work session once again was canceled, which was the second Thursday.
So you may not have had a meeting since.
We may not have a meeting since then. Well, normally, we receive that mail, you know, well in advance of the meeting.
Well, that's why I want to take action tonight, asking to either authorize the hiring of the planner, with this resolution, we'll make sure we get, but for the record, the night we did the resolution, the planning board attorney was here, the chairman was here, a few, and a few members, so sure as a...
I understand.
Of it, but I appreciate the confidence.
But in order to take action, you know what has to take place.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? And again, thank you, Mr. Raff. Motion to close? So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I need a motion for authorizing resolution.
Five point two. Five point two.
Five point two, authorizing planning board to hire, uh...
Five point one, excuse me.
Five point one. Authorizing planning board to hire Burgess Associates at a cost of 3,600, not to exceed 10,000 dollars, um, to be paid by, um, through the municipality. So the planning board's clear, it's not coming out of their budget. That's the purpose of this, and so they know, so they're going to ask who's paying for it, it's coming out of our current planning, engineering budget.
Well, actually, just to be clear, we left that dollar in the planning board's budget.
Oh, okay.
So it is sitting there as a result of this coming up, so it is in your budget.
So that's the motion I need. Anyone willing to believe what we should do, yes? Let's make a motion. And we have...
See, you can do it, all right?
No, not on the adoption of the resolution we have.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second on the resolution to authorize any...
I'll second it to discuss. My question is, Ray, didn't we put that money in the planning board budget to codify the ordinances? Zoning ordinances?
There was 20,000 dollars there. Uh, 10,000 of it was identified.
There was how much?
20,000. And 10,000 of it was identified as something that we could actually cut, but as a result of this coming up and the tax advantages that it could bring us, um, it was left in there.
Okay, this, this wouldn't interfere if they were ready to codify their zoning ordinances?
Correct.
Okay.
Burgess, what is Burgess looking for here? What are they doing for us? A master plan of Union Ave?
No.